We as a board have been placed in an uncomfortable position of not being able to guarantee at our meetings, the health and safety of all members of the board, the members of the administration, and most importantly, our student representative. As board chair, I have become increasingly concerned of the risk endangered by those attending Board of Education meetings. In addition, I feel strongly that the entire Board of Education should provide a strong example to the students in our schools and to the staff members who are employees of the board. And at present, we are not able to do so in a unified fashion. I feel that at the very least, the full board should be able to demonstrate respect for our students and our staff members who are required to wear masks in school buildings and in offices for six, seven, or eight hours a day, even when they are six feet apart. I do not believe it is too much to ask all board members to wear a mask for a two-hour meeting. I believe it is blatantly disrespectful not to do so. Events at recent Board of Education meetings have demonstrated that in some instances, personal opinion and political ideology have taken precedent over our number one priority, the health and safety of our students and staff. This is a situation that has not occurred previously during my long tenure on this board. Placing personal interest or the best interest of students, staff, and others in this community is unacceptable and unattainable. Until that condition changes, we are forced into a situation in which the Board of Ed meetings must be held virtually, even though, as you all know, that is not my preference. Therefore, Board of Education meetings will remain virtual until the present situation is rectified. Prior to the last Board of Education meeting, we were forced to postpone the annual celebration of excellence in which our Teacher of the Year, Para-Education of the Year, and our 30-year employees were to be honored. The celebration was postponed because our honored guests indicated a significant level of discomfort in attending event in the public assembling room in which all individuals attending would not be wearing face covering. They were willing to give up being recognized for their accomplishments publicly due to the considerable risk to loved ones who would be in attendance, some of who were a high-risk group. It is my pledge that we will celebrate the significant and singular career accomplishments of these amazing individuals. We may be forced to create virtual celebrations in lieu of holding them in person. We will still celebrate these accomplishments and post recordings of the events online so the entire community can congratulate and thank those worthy individuals for their contributions to the students and families of our wonderful community. One last statement. Give me a minute here, I lost my paper. In closing, I would like to express my gratitude to all the staff of the Southington Public Schools for their magnificent and unrelenting efforts to provide our students with an in-person educational experience that is second to none. No other district in the state of Connecticut is providing for students what we are providing here in Southington. Your efforts are nothing short of heroic, given the circumstances on which we are operating. This is the most significant public health emergency in living memory. I applaud you all, and you have my heartfelt thanks for what you do every single day. God bless, stay safe, and please continue to keep our children safe. Thank you. Continuing on with our meeting, I would ask for approval for minutes of our September 24th, 2010 meeting.
So moved. Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Moving on, we have public communication.
I'm sorry, Mrs. Carmody, I'm going to abstain. I was muted.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Clark. Moving on, public communications. I don't know if I go to you, Steve, or to Mr. Canelon, I am not certain.
Mr. Canelon.
Is Mr. Canelon, do you have any public communications at this time?
No, I have checked my emails we had posted, and I'm going to check one more time. I do not have any emails indicating the desire to participate in public communication. We do, Mrs. Carmody, we do have a number of individuals who have called in, and we can certainly allow for a few moments and see if any one of the folks who have called in are individuals who would like to participate in public communication. So if there are any members of the public who have called in, you can unmute your phone at this point in time, and you would have to identify yourself by name and address and have the opportunity to contribute to public communications.
So I will come back to you, Mr. Canelon, if you should receive any, if what you want me to do?
If we can just, if we can just wait about two minutes, Mrs. Carmody, or a minute, and see if anyone unmutes themselves, because that would indicate they want to participate in public communication.
Okay, thank you. Wait a few minutes then.
Okay, Mrs. Carmody, I'm looking at the screen where all the phone numbers are, and no one has unmuted themselves at this point. So I think it's safe to proceed.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have communications from Board of Education members. Do I see, don't want to miss any hands being raised? No communication from board members? Moving on, we have communication from administration.
Thank you, Mrs. Carmody. I do have, and before I say that, I actually just have one reminder that as individuals, especially members of the board or our student reps, when we get to that point, do speak. Because we are virtual, please just identify yourself by name. Generally speaking, the chair calls someone out by name, so in that instance, it's not necessary. But if that does not occur before speaking, just identify who you are. So our students, when we get to, when we get to your part of communications, as you begin to speak, just identify who you are. Say "student," and then proceed with your comments. So I have three, three items, if you don't mind. The first item, and these are all basically just public declarations. We want to publicly thank B&amp;V Jewelers. B&amp;V Jewelers has been very, very gracious in their efforts in manufacturing shields, the clear plastic face shields, pretty much for any one of our staff members who have indicated the desire to have one. All they had to do was call up, and those are manufactured, and when they're ready,
Oh, nice.
they get a phone call, and they can go down and pick them up. So B&amp;V Jewelers, that's, that's just been very, very, very generous, and I believe I, I'll have to forward to you just some information about the owner's been in contact with Mrs. Albedis a number of times. So this has been an ongoing, an ongoing effort that we really, really appreciate. I think another, it's just another instance of our community pulling together to support one another. The second is also a public declaration of gratitude. I'd like to publicly thank the Rotary Club for their donation of masks, and specifically Mr. Brown, who engineered that for us, to use that term. We are very grateful, and Mrs. Mallett was very, very grateful, because as you know, she has been procuring PPE for us since April, really since, since March and April, so that's a huge donation. That'd be very helpful. Mr. Brown, I don't, I don't recall, it was literally thousands of masks, is that not true?
Yeah, it's called a Rotary Million Dollar Mask. We went all over the state, and we had to put in for a certain amount. I put in for $12,000. $10,000 were just delivered to the Board of Ed, I think, two days ago. And then I delivered $1,000 today to the police and the fire. We had a nice little ceremony in front of the police station, and then I delivered another $1,000 to community services because their workers there need masks. So it was $10,000 to the school system.
Wonderful.
That is tremendous, and if you can please share our gratitude with members of Rotary.
Absolutely.
That was just very, very generous, we appreciate that.
Yep, thank you.
And the third and last item that I have is, you know, this past October 5th was World Teacher Day, and I don't think we say it often enough. I want to publicly thank all of our staff members, because I consider all of our staff members to fit under that umbrella. I'd like to publicly staff, thank all of our staff members for their efforts. This has been arguably one of the more difficult months, I would bet, in anyone's career. And these folks have, have gone above and beyond, and their, their efforts are really commendable. So I wanted to take this opportunity to personally do that and have that in the record. Thank you to all of our staff members for all of your efforts so far, it's just been, it's been absolutely.
Very, very proud of all of our staff members, thank you so much. And if I may add, Mr. Canelon, to Mr. Brown, he is donating an awful lot of his time to the Rotary Club and to doing wonderful things for our community. So Bob, I love you because you are a Yankee fan, but I also appreciate all that you are doing, so thank you. Besides volunteering for the Board of Ed, thank you very much, Bob.
That was it, Mrs. Carmody, from us, thank you.
I'm going to move on to our wonderful student reps, who would like to go first?
I am, thank you.
How are you?
I'm good, how are you?
I'm just fine, thank you.
Awesome. First off, the October 14th PSAT Day has been postponed and will now be a full day of school. All 11th grade students will now take the PSAT on Thursday, October 29th, and follow a half-day schedule while grades nine, 10, and 11 will have a full day of remote learning. Second, Student Council elections are starting for grades 10, 11, and 12. Elections are on the 15th. Candidates are required to create a minute-long video explaining what position they are running for and why they are the best choice. These videos will be shown during social studies classes. Since handouts and posters around the school are prohibited, students are returning to social media to campaign and gain student body support.
What a great way to do it, that's wonderful, thank you.
Okay, hi, it's Amara. I was going to tell you guys about how we had the National Honor Society and the World Language Honor Society induction tonight at the high school. It went very well, it was just really cold, but it was really good. Also, online learning is going very well. Kids, I think, are, like, some, most kids are less stressed with everything being in one place, and we are having good participation. We only like minor things with like a couple power outages here and there, but other than that, we're doing pretty good.
Oh, thank you. Brett?
Good evening, everybody. So, how's everybody doing?
Good.
Good to hear. So, in the, so, in school, when we talked to Mr. Pepe yesterday, he told us that Southern High School administration are in the process of setting up a tech help desk in the Library and Media Center. One of the faculty members is leading the project, and we, there is a possibility that we're going to get tech-savvy students to help, to help the help desk in off periods. And to Jelissa's point about elections, in conjunction with that, senior and junior class officer meetings are being held with administration at Southern High School to come up with ideas for events within restrictions, within given restrictions, and they're working closely with the health director, so our seniors and juniors, we can have some type of event, whatever that may be. So lastly, a little sports, or small sports update. The defending Class LL State Championship runner-up, Southern High School Girl Soccer Team is off to impressive 3-0 start. Lady Knights Field Hockey have played two games, and they had their senior night game, which they play against Lewis Mills in an exciting one-to-one overtime draw. Girls' and Boys' Cross Country Team celebrated their seniors and defeated Plainville in both races. Yesterday, the Girls' Swimming and Diving Team topped Plainville in a tightly contested meet. Boys' Soccer Team is 0-1-1 with a draw versus New Brandon and a loss to Plainville last Saturday in its senior night game, where they also celebrated their seniors. Girls' Volleyball Team is off to a great start this year with wins over New Brandon and Plainville before unfortunately losing a close match to Bristol Central earlier this week. And lastly, Blue Knights Football Program plans to recognize seniors at its 7v7 non-contact competition versus Plainville on Friday, 10:23 at Fontana Field. That's all.
Okay, well, thank you. Lot going on at the high school. Glad to see that you're all doing well, and thank you so much for your report. Board members, any questions of the students? Do I see any hands or anything? Okay, thank you. Moving on, we now have Mr. Brown to give us our curriculum and instruction committee meeting.
Thank you, Mrs. Carmody. First of all, I'd like to thank the teachers and administrators who worked on these curriculum updates. They have so much on their plates already, which we all know, but in addition to that, they worked this past summer to complete this important work. We on CNI were so impressed with the three areas of curriculum that I'm about to explain that we reviewed in our meeting last week. We really cannot thank these people enough to do this work on top of everything else they're doing, and they did a great job. The first of the, the first of the three areas, the first, these are first reads, so we're not going to take any action. The first subject we looked at was a continuation of work on the high school civics curriculum. As you may remember, we recently switched civics, which used to be in ninth grade, with US history, which used to be in 11th grade. So they've been upgrading the curriculum and doing an incredible job. We have approved the, the switch, but specific upgrades continue. What we reviewed was political, looking at issues in election time. Their focus is on teaching students to have respectful conversations on issues, respecting difference of opinions, how to detect bias, and more. I believe we all agree, these are skills that need to be taught, and some adults in this world could even benefit from that. Thank you to Rich, Heather, Kevin, and Nick for this work, we were very impressed with what they did. The second one was science. High school science courses, chemistry and earth science. What stands out again, thank you to John Duffy, who, I guess it's okay to mention, retires this week, correct?
Tomorrow is his last day.
What was that?
Tomorrow is his last day.
That's what I thought, yeah. And he has been so impressive when we've worked with him on curriculum, and making the science curriculum relevant to students, interesting, hands-on, also investigative. It's not like the old days, the teacher stands in front and lists a bunch of facts on the board, and you have to memorize it. They investigate, they have to report back. So what we, what stands out again is Mr. Duffy and his wonderful work, and also Nicole, who's the department head there. The two of them reported to us, and this is how they have crafted science curriculum to be real-world, useful, high-interest, engaging, and investigative. They examine real situations students will come into contact with in their real lives and make science very experimental, experiential, I'm sorry. Again, great work, very impressive. One of the things Mr. Duffy did say, which is absolutely true, which is the sign of a really quality educator, is he feels confident he has left behind enough people in positions of, in science, and especially in positions of writing curriculum, et cetera, where they can continue the work he started. So I want to thank John, John's been wonderful to work with.
Yes.
And the third area, which is not something, it's curriculum, but it is something they were bringing to us just to, so we can understand, again, very impressive, was a pre-K report card. Thank you to Kathy and Mary. They incorporated new state standards into the curriculum, made them measurable and useful and understandable to parents, and included both social and emotional health. Another impressive job, we could hear the pride in Mary Peterman's voice when she described this to us. And again, we applaud them for their extraordinary work in this area. So the first two I mentioned are first read, which I believe will take action on the next board meeting. We don't take any action on the kindergarten, or the pre-K. Steve, do I get all that right?
Yeah, but you know what, you forgot to tell them how we asked if we, you and I could go up to the high school and teach some of the new courses, because that used to be our area, and they told us Mr. Pepe wouldn't let us, so. You know, I don't know, we were going to go up there, Bob, someday, okay? Whatever Mr. Pepe says, we will ignore him. Yes, Mrs. Clark?
I just want to say, when I read the Grade 11 Citizenship in Action, holy moly, that was so, yeah, just so current and so up to date and so not dry. I, really, really, very impressive work.
Quite relevant.
Yeah, very much so.
And John Duffy leaving.
What a loss.
What a loss, because he really has brought science alive for the students, and we're kind of sad, kind of sad to lose him. He's done a great job. Thank you for your report, any comments from any other board members?
Or questions?
Questions? All right, moving on, we have next, did I miss somebody? Did anyone have any hand up I missed? No. All right, going on to our personnel report, may I have a motion?
Move to approve the personnel report as submitted.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that passes, going on to Old Business Town Government Communication. I don't believe I have any, Mr. Canelon, do you have any?
I'm not, although I will say that the next Board of Finance meeting, Mrs. D'Nello and I, at the very least, and perhaps others in the administration will be attending, and we will review with the Board of Finance the information that you're about to hear with regard to the non-lapsing account as it stood, based on the projects that were completed this year, and then some of the items that we're looking at in terms of school reopening and those costs. So that's the, that's our, probably our next communication with regard to town government, and I believe that is the 14th. Correct, it is the, it is the 14th, so that'll be the Board of Finance meeting on the 14th.
Okay, thank you.
Where is that being held, may I ask? Could you send us the information on that?
We will send you the information. I believe the last one was in person at Town Hall, was that not, Mrs. D'Nello?
Correct.
Okay, so as soon as that's posted, we'll, we'll send that out.
Thank you.
Any other questions on that, town communication, anyone else? Town government, non-lapsing funds? We are going to, Sherry, are you going to take this part over, please?
Yes, I am, thank you, Mrs. Carmody.
You're welcome.
So, board members, we did share quite a bit of information with you in advance of this meeting. The first item, I thought it would be best to walk you through the documents that you have. The first memo essentially was done to introduce you to each of the attachments, so I won't run through that document. And if you can now move to the Coronavirus Relief Fund, I wanted to update all of you on the actual grant amount, because it has changed twice since the initial award. You'll see that on August 21st, we were originally told that the district was getting just over $401,000. On August 26th, the state notified us that there was, notified everyone in the state that there was an error in the transportation calculation, so our grant increased to just over $546,000. In our last board meeting, I shared that there was an issue with the Southington Grant, because they did not fund our PPE appropriately. And so after following up, you will see that they did add $310,000 for PPE, and now the total of our grant stands at just over $856,000. The application has been submitted, and now we're in a situation where we're waiting for the opportunity to make revisions. I am happy to report that late this afternoon, we did receive an email from the state that told us that they will be allowing districts to reallocate transportation money, which means personnel and non-personnel within the cleaning, health, safety, and PPE categories. Right now, that's the only category that it applies to. So I will be reaching out to get more information on that, but that's very good news for us, because on that Coronavirus Relief Fund with the grant allocation, you'll see that $421,000 of the 856 was specifically awarded for what we thought we were going to be utilizing for the midday transportation run, when we thought that was the hybrid method we were going to use at Southington High School. So without the ability to reallocate those dollars, we would have lost the 421. So I'll be updating you once we have more information on how that money can be used. But I am now hopeful that that will help with some of our other expenses that you'll see a little bit later on through my presentation. Any questions on the grant itself?
But that is good news, right? That's excellent news for us, right, Sherry?
Yes, very good news. I think Mr. Brown has a question.
I do, I was, as I was reading through this, wondering if there's a day, for example, this week when the high school's not there, does the, do we pay the bus company the same, whether they drive their buses or not?
Yes, because we're still utilizing the bus runs during those hours, they're just starting a little bit later, unfortunately.
Oh, yeah, that's true.
We're still utilizing all of the buses.
So there's no savings at all by?
Not at this point.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions? Mr. Canelon?
I just wanted to make one point, so you see the amount of money that the state gave us in that grant, far, far, far below what we requested.
Right, right.
So that's unfortunate, but I wanted to make that point and make that point publicly. I believe we requested over $4 million, and we received $400,000 initially. Now we're up a little, a little higher than that, so it's, it's far from what we thought we would need, but we're glad to have a little flexibility, and Mrs. D'Nello's been doing a wonderful job staying on top of this, has spoken with the folks at the State Department countless times, you know, quite honestly. So we're, we're moving in the right direction, hopefully.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so the next document is truly a draft, and I'm actually, I'm going to just explain it, but then there's attachments again that go along with this. But the Board of Finance is basically requesting from this board a draft of how we plan to use the $1,963,779 that was the 2% carryover from our operating budget last year. And so this document is giving an estimate of the school reopening cost, looking at a subsidy for our food service program, and then the projects that, you know, we'd like to do, and projects that we'd be spending a lot more money on had we not had the need to spend money on school reopening in a safe manner. So I'm going to go to attachment A. This document should look very familiar to you, because you have seen the estimates back on August 5th and also on September 3rd. The third column now provides you our most up-to-date estimate for school reopening costs through today, essentially, which is just about $1.4 million. Over to the right, I've tried to allocate based on the information we have at the time this document was done, because we still are unclear on the revisions of whether or not the funding would be able to be done through the Coronavirus Relief Grant, or whether or not we need to utilize our non-lapsing account. So as we shared earlier, we really got limited dollars for personnel. So you see the cost that we have for, you know, teachers, custodians, nurses, things like food service, the additional para-educator time, that's the only place where we, right now, had personnel money was to consider for transportation, to pay some of our para-educators to come in before and after school for the appropriate social distancing of students through transportation. Other than that, until we get a revision approved, hopefully for that $421,000, right now, I'm assuming that all of those dollars would have to come from our non-lapsing account. The other thing you need to know about the Corona, I'll just start calling it the CRF grant, is that it's only good for expenditures through December 31st. So when we're hiring teachers to assist with remote learning for the entire school year, if we are able to utilize some of those revisions for the grant, it will only cover salaries that we expend by December 31st. So we will still have to cover many of those expenses for the second half of the year. As you go down the document, you see that there's technology cost of $100,000. As you go down the document, you see that there's technology cost of $129,000. As of right now, none of that technology will be covered under this grant. I am working with some other grant applications to see if we can provide some of that funding from other grants. But as of this point, that would be something we'd need to cover from that non-lapsing account.
Can you explain what that is, Sherry, what that technology is?
Yes, there's a number of softwares that we've purchased, the GoGuardian, ParentSquare, ClassLink, all of the technology that Mr. Medenci had the opportunity to share at one of our last meetings is rolled into this dollar amount.
Okay.
This does not include the devices that were purchased with the ESSER funds or with funds that remained from last school year.
And no system-wide types of thing?
No. No.
Infrastructure?
No, not infrastructure. This is truly software-related costs.
Okay, thank you.
And then you'll see, rather than me continuing to break out all of the PPE, which we did have to break out for the actual grant application, and so I can certainly provide all of the documentation of our actual expenditures for the $230,000 because we, Jennifer Mallett has done an outstanding job of not only securing all of these items, but making sure that we have the supporting documentation to receive the reimbursement. So the grant funding, as you'll see right now, is sitting at the $286,000. We will be requesting a reallocation of about $474,000 as soon as they open up and give us that opportunity to do so. And then there'd still be about $94,000 or $95,000 left. And we'll have a couple of options. We'll have the ability to purchase additional PPE if we so need to. We'll certainly inquire about what other opportunities there are with the revisions. But we will do our best to make sure that we don't leave any dollars on the table. And so you're actually able to go back to any expenditures you had since last March. So we did buy a number of PPE items with last year's budget dollars that if we, there was nothing else to purchase and there was no way to reallocate and revise the grant to cover the cost on this page, the last resort would be to apply the money to previous expenses from the previous year to make sure at least that money gets turned back to the town of Suddington, you know, comes back in some, in some way, shape, or form and is not left on the table with the state. So those, that's the summary of our expenditures at this point in the first piece on the non-lapsing account. But I do want to be clear that we expect that that number will decrease based on what we'll be able to get for additional grant funds through the revision. The second item you've heard a lot about in regards to the food service subsidy and loan. I have to say, I'm very disappointed with the participation numbers with the free breakfast and lunch that we have. It's really sad. We have some elementary schools where we're only serving about 15 to 20 free breakfasts in schools where we have, you know, 200 students in the school that are eligible, but we only have about 20 participating. So it's unfortunate because, you know, it's, it's there, it's available for all students. But with the loss of our customer base at the high school, when we're shut down, and even when we're in session with the hybrid method and only having 50% of the kids on campus, it is really hitting the food service program difficult, having a hard time. So we had already reviewed with you in an earlier meeting the $337,000 loss that we had as of June 30th. You know, the expenditures to open the year, we will be looking to see if there's some money within that CRF grant as well to fund especially packaging materials. They spent between $15,000 and $25,000 on just the containers and packaging material that we've never had to spend before. So those are items that, it appears from my last correspondence with the state that there may be some dollars for. And now with the opportunity for revisions for salaries, and we've documented how we've had to actually increase staffing because of the social distancing at schools and having more serving stations at different areas in the school, we've had to add staff. So, you know, we're trying to reduce our overhead as much as we can, but unfortunately, for the month of September, to get things off the ground, we really did have to add hours to the program. But I will be meeting with Nia Willens, our Food Service Director tomorrow, and revisiting now that we're seeing what participation numbers look like and what we can do with hours with our staffing. So at this point, we are recommending that the school district look at loan, look at providing a loan to the food service program in the amount of $300,000 to cover the overhead cost for, through the fall until we start receiving our grant reimbursements for the meals that we're actually serving. Any questions?
But it's so hard to believe that, that the children, especially in elementary school, aren't taking advantage of it, Sherry. I.
Yeah. I have to be honest, I think the difficulty that we're having is previous to this year, when students did want to receive breakfast, they were able to bring the meals to their classroom. So they would get off the bus, they'd go through the cafeteria line, grab their brown bag of breakfast, and go to their classroom, and they could still socialize with their friends. Because the students cannot take their masks off in the classroom to eat, they're required then, when they come to school, to sit in the cafeteria. At the middle schools, they go to the library. And that social interaction, when the kids first arrive at school, they'd rather spend that time in the halls, getting into their classroom and sitting and visiting with their, you know, with their friends than unfortunately going into the cafeteria and getting a free breakfast. So unfortunately, that really is a struggle for us right now. And there's not a lot of time, you know, when the kids, from the time the kids get off the bus to the time school starts. So being unable to have breakfast in the classroom is really, is hurting, is hurting us with this. But we're gonna look at other ideas. If there's any way, you know, part of me is thinking, if there's a way to provide meals as kids leave school for breakfast the next day that they could have at home, that might be something that could be beneficial. So, you know, we're, we're inquiring and trying to see what other options we have. Okay? The third attachment.
Excuse me, Mr. Buzeski has a question. Joe, your hand's up?
Yep.
Did I see you? Yes?
Yeah, thank you. Oh, am I, I'm not muted, right?
Good. We can hear you.
We can hear you.
Sherry, thank you. So just out of curiosity, do we have enough data in the past couple of weeks to start to compile what our payments with that USDA plan would look like? And is it enough to compensate for where we've been fiscally in the same time period in previous years, maybe the past two or three years?
No. The first claim for the month of September is just being finalized, and Nia Willens will be submitting that. But knowing that the school year started later, knowing that the high school was closed for a number of days, you know, we also lost the serving day with the power outage, and the fact that we have a number of remote learners, K-12, our overall customer base has decreased. So I can tell you that our overhead for the month of September is, I'm gonna go out on a limb and say, almost double what I expect to get from the claim reimbursement.
Okay.
So I am very, I have serious concerns. I'm, I'm hopeful that $300,000 is going to get us through, but I'm not overly optimistic unless we start seeing participation numbers increase that we may not be back before you and have to rethink our plans before the end of the year with the program.
Right. Because I guess my, my only question would be, if we think, and certainly looking at the other things, I know we're gonna go through that in a little bit, is it worth making sure that we have a healthier amount of money in there? Do you think we need 400 in there or?
So what I was, yeah, what I was going to explain when we get to the next page is that the list of projects that you see are not, are not anything that we're looking to start running right out, bidding, and starting these projects. We think it would be premature until we see, really, as we get farther along in the school year with our overall cost of COVID-related expenses, until the grant money is secure, until we see how the food service program is going, to actually start prioritizing these projects and spending those dollars. Because, you know, we could need more for food service, we could need more for school reopening. You know, we, we're all under the impression right now that things are going fairly well and that students are going to stay in school. We all know how quickly things change. So, so, you know, and there could be added expenses with any of that. There could be savings on the flip side within the operating budget, you know, if, if we ended up going remote. So it's just too hard, October 8th, to give you really a better picture of where our operating budget's going to be.
Right. Again, it's, it's not so much a critique of the number, it's just more of my concern that, because we can't let this account go hit zero because it's, this is actual money that's going for people's salaries, right? So it's, so I'd be inclined to, you know, even put in more money and then sort of with the understanding that at the end of the year, you know, as we sort of discussed, I think you've mentioned $30,000 at the end of the fiscal year, and that would be returned to us. Maybe we sort of adopt that policy ahead of time. And then this way, say we put $500,000 into last this year, if there's a surplus of $100,000 at the end of the year, it would come back. So I don't know, again, I'm not 100% sure as to how that would work. I know that we, we got creative with creating, creating this almost as a loan. But, but definitely just to sort of, I guess, put ourselves at ease just to make sure that we have enough to, to keep this funding.
Sure. And I'm not sure if any other board members have a thought, have thoughts about that recommendation?
Well, wait, wait, I think I agree with Joe that we can't let the, we have to put some money into the program. I don't know how we're gonna do it, what our priorities are gonna be, Sherry. And right now, you really can't make a projection for us, correct?
I can't. I can tell you that I, I, what I can tell you is I'm not confident that $300,000 will be enough. And until we start seeing some claims data to know that. So I think we have one of two options. We, we could follow Mr. Buzeski's concept of increasing the dollar amount, or we can make it very clear in our conversation with the Board of Finance, of that $1.9 million, the majority of it is going to school reopening. And then there's going to be, you know, the first 300 that we're looking at is going to this program, and we might be back for an additional loan to the program prior to June 30th. Their board does meet monthly. We can see how that conversation goes with them before we come back with any specified prioritized projects. But, you know, if, if the board so chooses, we can certainly increase that 300,000 and not have to go back again and, you know, asking for another $100,000 or $200,000 to make it through the year. I wish I could give you more certainty. I was a little optimistic the first week when we saw the participation numbers. And unfortunately, in the last week, I've really seen a drop in the breakfast arrangement.
Bob, you had your hand up, I think?
Yeah, I was just gonna ask, because I agree with Joe. I think it's a good point. What's the negative of us adding, say, $50,000 or so? Is there any negative?
We'd have to take from something else, right, Sherry?
Well, it'll just reduce, at some point in time, it'll reduce the amount of funding that's left for the projects. I don't know if Mr. Canelon wants to weigh in on his thought of where we are.
Well, thank you. What we thought was, you know, we're trying to be conservative in terms of the dollars. And as you'll see, you know, in a few minutes, not making any recommendations at this point in time to expend any of those funds on projects because we need to make sure there is an ample amount of money in there for school reopening costs. And even though we're past the initial reopening, those costs will continue in, in food service. I will say, though, that there is yet another Board of Education meeting in October and another Board of Education meeting in November. And we can revisit this discussion. The funds in the non-lapsing account, according to the state statute, are subject to Board of Education approval. And once the Board of Finance establishes that, we have dialogue with the Board of Finance. And as I've said a number of times, it's really important to have an open dialogue and to demonstrate that the use of those funds is appropriate. And we are gonna report on those projects and the use of the funds that we were allowed to have in that non-lapsing account because I think that's a really healthy dialogue and it shows members of the community that we're being responsible stewards of the investments that they've allowed us to have, which are our school buildings, et cetera. This is just an unusual year. And last year, towards the end of the school year, I did say repeatedly to members of the Board of Finance and to this board that we may need to use the non-lapsing account funds for quote-unquote, you know, operating expenses, which we would never typically propose. So we are, we will have additional board meetings moving, moving forward. And I, I do think that we'll have an opportunity to revisit this in terms of cost. It would be, it would behoove us not to commit more dollars than we think we've already committed as coming out of the non-lapsing funds until we have a better handle on food service and we have a better handle on the related costs of, of school reopening. You know, I love the fact that we were able to do other projects and we have a list of projects that need to be done to our buildings. That's fairly long. So that's not really a problem for us to, to put the list together and make a recommendation to, to this board when we get to the point where we feel more comfortable with our expenditures for things like school reopening and food service. So I apologize, that was a long way of saying, we have a couple more opportunities once we have additional data from food service to revisit this and see if $300,000 is enough. Right now, I would, I would certainly support the recommendation that Mrs. D'Amello is making of the $300,000. I think we can go from there. If we need additional dollars, we, we certainly can recommend that.
Okay, and then board members. Mr. Darynowski, what did you do with your little kitty cat? You keep pushing him off. That's terrible.
If he keep, one more time, he's going off the table.
I know, I'm watching, I'm watching.
Buddy. Anyway, I, I agree with Sherry and Mr. Canelon. They, I think we've got a couple more meetings, you know, one in October, one in November. If we need to make another adjustment, we'll have more data. And I think that's the more prudent way to go. I do agree with Joe that we, you know, we, if we need to put money back in.
Yeah, we'll have to do it.
We're gonna have to do it. But I, I think in little steps, I think we'll be far better.
I agree. So I guess we're all, we all have to wait, right?
I just, I just wanted to ask, and I want to make sure I heard this right because I think what you said, when, when this goes in front of the Board of Finance, it's, it's a recommendation of how the board wants to spend these funds. But if you put that caveat, because I think Joe's right, I think we're gonna end up in a position, and we talked about this.
Not to foot more.
The fact of creating the loan, I think, is a great idea. But if we do need to go back, if they understand that we may have to dip into this, this list and do something different with it, as, as long as they're aware of it, I think it's, it's safe. And we have that ability to do that. Because I think, based on the way Mrs. D'Amello is describing this and shocking the participation, I think we're gonna end up having to do that.
Yeah, yeah. So in, in answer to a question that I think I heard in there, or your, or your assumption, affirming your assumption, yes, it is within the Board of Education's legal right to determine how the funds are used. And when we do have the discussion next Wednesday with the Board of Finance, that will be one of the points that we will be sure to make, that we do have this particular situation and as well as the potential additional costs for the, for the reopening. There are a lot of variables here right now that, you know, uncontrolled variables, that's the bane of statistics, right?
May I ask a question, Mrs. Carmody, of Mr. Canelon? And I'm just listening to Zaya. Any pushback from the Board of Finance? There cannot be, according to state statute, if, insofar as if we say we need an additional, say, we need another $100,000 for food services, is there any way, is there any means or method for the Board of Finance to prevent that from happening?
You know, by, by state statute, it is, the funds in the non-lapsing account, once it's established, must be approved by the Board of Education. So the, the non-lapsing account is established for the Board of Education, and the board does determine how the dollars are used. It's, again, just simply we, this is an unusual year. We typically would not be making a recommendation to use these types of funds or this funding for any type of operating expenses. But, right, you know, I hate to use the phrase, it is what it is, but this is. but this is an unusual year. Hopefully, it will be a unique year, and we will not be having this type of discussion next year.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Sheri, do you want to continue on with the presentation?
Thank you. Yes. So now I'd like to turn your attention to Attachment C. This is a document draft that Mrs. Mallett has put together for your review. And just to kind of walk you through this, the far-left column explains where these projects were originally located. Some of them were part of the capital, our five-year capital plan that you've previously approved. Some of them were part of the operating budget under major projects and equipment. However, they just were not able to be funded. And then there are some items at the very bottom that are considered new requests, that you have not seen prior in a capital improvement plan or in the major projects and equipment, but have come to our attention that need, that need attention, and those have been added to this document. Again, this is not a prioritized list. What she provided to you was the, where it was, the project name, the location, the original budget amount, if it was in fact previously part of a document that you reviewed. And then she provided an updated cost of projects for these items. And then she highlighted in green, three of the projects that were actually on the listing that you approved in the October 2019, unexpended listing, but they fell below the line. We didn't have enough funding to do those three projects. So she just highlighted those for you, to know that that was part of a previously approved plan. So at this point in time, I feel as if this document is really just informational. The purpose of sharing it is we want to make sure we get these projects in front of the Board of Finance, so that they see that these are the types of things that we would much rather be spending our non-lapsing fund on. And these are the types of projects that we would come back to revisit at some point in time, once we know there's funding available. And we would ask the Board of Education to work with us in approving a prioritized list of these projects. But I really think until we know how much money we may or may not have, it's really too premature to ask you to prioritize the list. And the last document is just a review of the board-approved projects for the non-lapsing fund from 2019. Mrs. Mallett wanted you to see what projects were actually funded. And then again, you see those three projects that fell below the line, that now moved on to this Attachment C. But she worked in concert with Mr. Romano in reviewing a lot of these individual projects, and thought it was important to get them in front of you. So at this point in time, if I just draw your attention back to that draft recommendation that had the dollar amounts, and really just to kind of reiterate what I believe our recommendation to the Board of Finance would be, is I'm confident that when we meet with them on Wednesday, we will not have a revision submitted or approved yet from the state. So we'll continue to talk about that $1.1 million of potential costs for reopening, with the caveat that we're anticipating that will be reduced once grant revisions are approved. I'll certainly share with them that that 300,000 is our initial installment to the food service program, and it's highly likely that we may be revisiting additional funding for the program. And last but not least, we'll review with them the types of projects that eventually are needed in the district, and that they will see much later on. And when I say much later on, it may be the spring, it may be the summer, it may be the fall of 2021, when we catch our breath and we all get through the 2021 school year and really see where the funding remains and have, begin those conversations. So I just wanted to be sure that the Board of Education is comfortable with that recommendation before Mr. Canelon and I go to the Board of Finance meeting next Wednesday.
Thank you. Joe, your hands up, I think, right? Yes?
So Sheri, I just have one question. And this is more that it jogged my memory after having a conversation with Mr. Canelon, in lieu of some of the cyber issues that we were having. So I saw that there was an upgrade of SPS Network. Did that have to do with the system that we have in place as far as like one-to-one and that whole setup?
I think Mr. Canelon would like to answer that question for you.
Sure.
I can absolutely do that. It has more to literally, it's literally the network, so it's literally the infrastructure pieces.
Okay. So I guess my question with that is, because of the current situation, how heavily we're relying on that, is that the type of thing that it's worth maybe bringing that to finances, moving sort of up the chain, and even, I don't know, maybe asking them if that's considered a one-time expenditure to sort of assist with something like that? Because, you know, again, I think it's pretty important that we make sure that we get that all dialed in.
So I think we have to determine what that is first.
Okay.
Right now, we've, you know, we've been working with a company that we brought in, AdNet. And one of the, one of the cautions there has been to, let's move, let's move slowly.
Okay.
Let's look at exactly what we have. Or we've, when I say we, I will say, our entire team, including the team from AdNet, has done some wonderful work in terms of stabilizing the network. And again, we taxed our network considerably.
Right.
By implementing the remote learning strategy that we have, as most districts have. And so there are, there are some other, excuse me, there are some other strategies that they're reviewing. Steve and I have another meeting tomorrow morning with one of the principals, principals of the company, not one of our building principals. And so we continue to learn more about where we might be able to go with this. And a caution that we've received already is, let's not rush into major hardware purchases at this point in time. Let's see exactly where we are. Let's see what we can do. You know, internally, there are some shifts that are being recommended in how we do things. So that's a, that's a to-be, that's why there's a to-be-determined number.
Right, right. So as of right now, it's working, it could be, it could be updated, or we could add servers to it. But as of current, we're in a good spot.
Well, we're, we're in a better place than we were.
Okay, perfect.
So that answers your question, Joe?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Any other board members? Dave Falvo?
Yeah, I have a question regarding the visitor verification system. If I recall to our last budget, I believe that we voted to take it up, take it off from our budget, but I see it in the major projects and equipment for the year 2021, 2022. So I was just wondering about that.
So after that little adventure, what I indicated to our board was, I would be happy to bring in individuals from Raptor Technology. And we had that discussion about doing that. Now, we didn't do it in the spring, because we weren't meeting in person. And basically, most of us were at home, trying to work. So I had Raptor Technologies do a nice presentation to our school safety and security committee, which, as you know, has command-level staff from police, fire, homeland security, public health, school personnel, as well as our YMCA partners. And I have scheduled that, I've shared this previously, but I have scheduled for October 22nd, meeting a presentation, so that all of our board members can have that information and be able to ask questions about it. So that's why that's on there. And I'm going to reiterate right now that the system itself is something that, A, you do need to look at and ask questions about. Our entire school safety and security committee that I mentioned earlier saw this presentation and are pretty much in concert with its utility and benefit to the school district. So there will be a presentation, and that's why that's on there. And I did say that before, that that was coming back. I will bring that back, and then we'll have a discussion about it.
Who is giving the presentation, and do we still have to vote on it?
This is not a vote situation. This is an information session. It's Raptor Technologies.
If I can just add for Mr. Falvo, just so that, to just explain the process, when we have something before you in the Board of Education budget, and if the board chooses not to fund it in that budget year, and we still feel it's important, we just push all the projects back a year. So now we've moved that to the 21, 22 budget line or budget column. But then, as we reviewed the capital budget and those major projects and equipment, the items that we felt were worthy of bringing to your attention, we've put on this list. So last October, the board worked with us when we prioritized the projects, and then approved that listing to move forward. And as Mr. Canelon said, you'll be getting more information on that. But right now, it's not, there's nothing that's been, needs to be voted on. It's informational.
And just another question for Mr. Canelon. Will this presentation be given to us in executive session, so we would be able to discuss more details? Or would this be during the regular board meeting?
Public session. There won't be anything here that'll compromise student or school safety.
That answers your questions, Dave?
It does.
Okay, so you understand why it's going, why we're having the presentation on the, what was it, the 24th of October, our next board meeting?
Yeah, I mean, I do feel it would be better to have it during executive session, so that way we would be able to ask more detailed questions regarding the safety and security of our school, rather than having that open in a public session.
Well, it's an informational item. And quite frankly, I think our public actually needs to see that, too. There's nothing, there's nothing in the presentation that is specific to any one of our schools that would compromise school safety.
We had specific questions regarding our schools. That's why I'm asking about the executive session, and saying it would probably be better if we had specific questions regarding our schools, rather than just a generic presentation.
Well, if at some point in time, there are specific questions, that are questions that are specific to our schools, then that is a subject, that is a subject for executive session, because it falls under the school safety thing. This is an informational presentation. It's not specific to any of our schools at this point in time.
So I think, Dave, if it did become something that was specific, that we felt was infringing on things that we didn't want the public to know, we would go to executive session. This is just going to be an informational-type discussion to tell us how the system works. Am I correct, Mr. Canelon?
That is correct.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yeah, there is.
James, I'm sorry, I didn't see you. I'm sorry.
So I just want to jump back really quickly, a couple attachments to Attachment A, which is the COVID-19 reopening plan. So, you know, so Zaya actually asked about that technology line item, which is the $129,000 in software that we purchased for COVID. I think this is probably more for Steve. But did we know, or do we have any like ongoing costs with that, or was that a one-time purchase for the software?
Those are annual purchases. So essentially, they are one-time, because if we're back in full in-person, a lot of that software we won't need again. But some of it might be a recurring cost if we're one-to-one. Some of the web filtering and monitoring software and stuff that if, you know, because once we're one-to-one, I don't see us pulling back the devices after the pandemic. So some of that stuff you'll need. But some of it was software that was meant to provide teachers the instructions they need to deliver remotely. So there was like, there's a tool where kids can annotate on PDFs called Kami, and teachers can as well. And there's Peer Deck, which is kind of a digital delivery system, lessons that are recorded, things like that. So some of those are things that we won't necessarily need every year down the road. But some of the other tools that, again, were the safety and internet security and monitoring and web filtering and whatnot, that we will.
So it's essentially a subscription service?
Yes.
Okay.
But once you pay that, there's no, for this year, there's no more costs.
Right, right. Is it all subscription-based, or was like some of it a one-time only, and then we have maintenance going forward?
Some of them, there's setup fees, because it's the initial year you use it, so that there's like an additional cost for that initial, you know, purchase. But then it gets less for the reoccurring, because the setup fees, you know, they don't charge you every year once, if you're, you know, renewing.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Thank you, Steve. Does that do it, Sheri, for you?
That concludes my report. Yes, thank you.
Okay, so we can move on, am I right, everybody? Anybody have other questions on the non-lapse? Okay. We'll move on to, that I lost my place. This will go to Steve, the review and approval of the 2020, 2021 Teacher Evaluation and Support Plan.
Yes. So because of the COVID-19 pandemic, the commissioner has exercised in the State Department of Education, State Board of Education, what they call flexibilities to the 2017 legislation. As you guys all remember, that legislation that required pretty extensive observations and goal-setting and use of data and whatnot. They relaxed that to a degree, but with the caveat that your district professional development and evaluation committee would review those flexibilities and agree to adopt them. So, you know, our professional development evaluation committee consists of a large amount of teachers and a large amount of administrators. We got together at a virtual meeting, you know, and everybody, we reviewed the flexibilities and what that entailed. It was unanimous. Everybody wanted the flexibilities, because I don't think anybody wants to do the traditional evaluation plan in this current state. And so most folks were grateful for that. And so our administrators are kind of walking the staff through what those flexibilities will look like. But it's less, it's probably what you consider more frequent observations, but much shorter. And all of them, if you remember, the biggest part of it was the paperwork and the write-ups and the ratings and all that stuff that went with it. And now they're just allowed to provide feedback in narrative form to teachers after an observation. So it's, which is what we used to do, you know, like as Tim always said, we never needed to adopt that old plan. Our plan was, was find the way it was. But, so it's kind of, you know, Bob, the pendulum swings. I see Bob, because he remembers, he was the original PDEC member when we had to adopt the last plan. So, you know, it's a formality in your part that it has to have board approval. But there's, it has already been endorsed by the District Professional Development Evaluation Committee, which, again, is teachers and administrators.
So you do, we do need a motion to approve this, correct, Steve?
Yes.
Can I ask a question?
Certainly, Colin.
How do you do, how do you do teachers who are teaching remotely only?
Yeah, they can be, their codes to their mobile classrooms are shared with their supervisors. And supervisors can jump into their classes remotely at any time and see what the instruction looks like, what resources and materials are being used, what is the level of engagement of the students, what are the interactions like?
That's a lot different than in-person. I mean...
Yep. But they also can still do in-person observations for the, when teachers are in person. It doesn't, it doesn't have to be exclusively remote. But if we have remote teachers, then...
Well, I'm just thinking of, you know, the remote academy for elementary and teachers that are just doing specifically remote. I would think that you'd have to have, yeah, I can see the level of engagement and things of that nature, but it would still be very, it would be very difficult to compare an in-person class versus a remote class, you know, I'm just...
Yeah. Well, the other part is they narrowed down the amount of domains and indicators that we're looking for. A lot of it focuses on classroom environment, or establishment of a classroom community, or the relationship piece, or the, just the instruction. Some of the other things that you typically wouldn't, you'd have to be in classroom to see, that those for either group, in-person or remote, are not being measured. Mr. Brown?
Yeah, I have two questions. One, Colin just asked if it's the same system for the remote and home. The second one is, I recall, there's provision where it's mutually agreed upon. And the look, as I read through the plan, like, you have decided what most the goals are?
We provided, well, the commissioner says that you must consider social-emotional learning as one of the, you know, primary goals. The mutually agreed upon is if people wanted to add academic indicators as well as part of their goal-setting, they can.
Okay.
Which is important, Bob. So that's great to have that in.
Yeah, I totally agree. I'm just, I'm just, I want to make sure the plan fulfills what it's supposed to do. And I remember that mutually agreed upon issue became an issue when we first started.
Yeah. And we also have, we have within the plan a dispute resolution process for when it can't be mutually agreed upon, that has two association members, you know, two administrators and myself.
I remember, I went through it.
Yeah. We've used that a few times the past years. That would still be in play if people couldn't agree. But I know that right now, the, our administrators and our teachers are hand-in-hand in making sure that, you know... I, I know that right now, the, our administrators and our teachers are hand in hand in making sure that, you know, everybody understands that this is something that we do because there's some legislation surrounding it. But good, honest feedback occurs daily in our classrooms. Like, it's not, this, this is just a requirement. You know, if our administrators have feedback for teachers or if teachers need support, they get it outside of this plan as well. It's not just, just.
Thank you.
Just so the public understands, Steve, um, our teachers are being evaluated. You know, we, we need to have everyone understand that. And we're doing the best we can doing it remotely and so forth, correct?
Yes.
And it is required by the state.
Yes.
So we do need, if there's not any other questions?
Sherry?
Yeah, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Just a quick, I mean, Steve, just your, your best guess. I mean, when things go back to normal, I assume, do you think the state is going to unrelax? They're going to stress out and go back to the, the more complex, not as effective method of doing it that they put into play?
You just, yeah, it's great. You know, it's a great point. And I probably should bring that up. In that same memo to superintendents, the Commissioner indicated that this is the segue to a revision to the old plan anyways, because they'll spend the time right now while we're in this flexibility phase to revisit more authentic and engaging ways to support our teachers and evaluate them.
Because I think, I mean, from, to what Mrs. Clark said, I mean, the, the, the difference in remote learning versus in-person learning, it's, it's very different, and yet it's somewhat the same, too, right?
Yeah.
You're still trying to do the same type of engagement. It's just you're, you're engaging in a much different way. And I, I think a much more difficult way, quite frankly. So, but the methods that you're looking at should be, should be a little bit different and a lot more flexible. So I, I think we need a motion. I'll make a motion to accept the revised copy of the Teacher Evaluation and Support Plan as presented by the administration for implementation during the 2020, 2021 school year.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Steve. Uh, next on our agenda is Budget Assumptions and Priorities 2021, 22.
I'll, I'll make a motion to move to adopt the Budget Assumptions and Priorities for 2021 to 2022.
Second.
Um, any discussion questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Uh, any opposed? Motion carries. Um, then we have the SHS Citizen in Action Units First Reading. Just don't have to do anything with that, Bob, do we?
There's no motion on either item.
No motion on either.
There'll be a second reading.
Or the next one.
Motion will be in the next meeting.
Just first readings. Okay. Then we have Mr. Darrenowski, who has, where's your little kitty cat, Mr. Darrenowski?
Uh, he's over on the floor eating.
Do you have the ability to make a motion?
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you all for a wonderful meeting. Good night. Enjoy the rest of the evening. Thank you.
Good night, all.
Good night.
Good night, everybody.
Bye-bye.
Good night, everyone. Good night.
All right.